Twenty twenty-three, here we are at City Hall again, and Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you and please tell us who will speak next.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Our first presentation tonight is going to come from Fire Chief, Chief Jordan. So I'm gonna go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Actually, the first presentation here will be done by the consultant that we hired through the Emergency Services Consulting Incorporated to go over the standard of cover, master plan, and community risk assessment that they did for our department. Tonight here for them is Chris Trudy.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present our findings to you regarding the standards of cover study that we started in the beginning of this year. And let me begin with saying that over the past several months that we've been putting this study together, your staff has been absolutely wonderful to work with. Very accommodating, very pleasant, very respectful. Everything we asked for, they gave and provided without question, and actually probably went over and above everything that we needed to be able to come to the conclusions that we did. So you got to be proud of your staff. So thank you very much for that. Let's start with basically some definitions, first of what is it, what is exactly that we were brought here to do? And we'll start with the community risk assessment, which is effectively the identification of those things that are within your community that effectively the fire department exists for. Do we have a boat? Do we have tornadoes? Do we have a fire? Do we have high rises? What is it that we're, the risk that we have within our community that actually requires us to have a fire department? And so, community risk assessments are all about laying all of that out, identifying what all of that is. And so, we have quite a bit of that in there. The next portion of it is a master plan, and the master plan is really nothing, anything different than the comprehensive plan that you already have for the entire city. You have a comprehensive plan twenty forty, which we'll talk about in a minute here, and a master plan is more or less a long-term plan for how we're gonna go forward with this, or strategic plan, which is where people get these confused, it's more of a two- to five-year kind of thing. So this is kind of a, an element where we're looking at the next ten to twenty years going forward on this. And that leads us with standards of cover. And the standards of cover is if we have this risk, and this is where we think the community is going, what exactly do we need in order to be able to mitigate that risk or to meet that need that's going to be going forward? I apologize that you don't have the hard copies in front of you. We just learned today that they're somewhere in a FedEx shipping facility someplace and didn't make it here on time, even though it was a while ago, and we're expecting to have those here for you by the end of the week. So I know that, I believe that you've looked at the electronic version of at least so you have some sense of kind of where we're going with this. So standards of cover are all about identifying what exactly do we need in order to be able to take the community in the way that we want to be able to do that. The report makes forty-five recommendations, not an unusual number for the amount of change and that you're going through, especially with the increased revenue that you're coming with the sales tax. Twenty-four of the recommendations, we consider major recommendations, twenty-one of them we consider minor. The major recommendations include, I'll just go through them real quickly in a summary here, a new Station eleven near Route two ninety-one and I seventy, relocating stations nine and ten, and we'll talk about these in a little more detail here momentarily, a rebuilding of stations five, six, and eight, possibly with a new training facility coupled along with Station eight, an additional shift battalion chief and a rescue unit, and two additional training officers. Those are really the major financial recommendations, major recommendations that we're making. And then, non-financial strategic recommendations that we're making include some AMR accountability, a type of, different type of relation with them for providing EMS service, some nine-one-ones, dispatch center changes on how they do things to make the process smoother and quicker for both the fire department and the recipient of the ambulance service, and then some general organizational strategy development for moving forward with the organization. One of the things that we do when we talk about, we talk about call volumes and what kind of demand is going to be on the fire department as we look at population, there's a correlation relative to where your population density is and the amount of calls that you had, and there is a correlation between the higher the population you have, your call volume goes up. So we took a look at what potential population projections were for Independence, and we looked at the twenty forty, I'm sorry, the, your Imagine Independence twenty-four study that you have, your comprehensive plan, which was created back in two thousand and eighteen, and it uses data that was provided by the Mid-America Regional Council, which I think you're all familiar with. And it projected that in two thousand and forty, Independence was gonna have a population of about one hundred and twenty-nine thousand people. So roughly about ten percent higher than what you've got right now. And we extended that out to twenty fifty, to a population of one hundred and thirty-two thousand. However, when we looked at the trends, the population trends for the city over the last ten years, we saw a trend that was maybe a little bit faster or a little bit, had a higher pace of growth than what the regional council had come up with. And so, we projected, or at least what we, we looked, thought and looked at was the fact that you potentially could be as high as one hundred and fifty thousand people within, and by the year twenty fifty. If you, if we broadly say something in between there, we'll say somewhere by thirty years from now, you're gonna be somewhere between one hundred and thirty and one hundred and fifty thousand people. Not necessarily exact as it needs to be, but at least to have some type of a trend to see where you're actually going. Where that comes into play is that the projected call volume for the fire department, if we look at the, at the graph that I have on there, the blue line that's on there is kind of a projected call volume for where the fire department is gonna go based on growth that is in the community's comprehensive plan up to twenty forty. And by that number, using the percentages on call increase tied to the population, an argument or the suggestion could be made that the fire department's not gonna exceed twenty-five thousand calls in a year. Well, this year alone, the fire department has already exceeded that, and they're up to almost twenty-seven thousand, so that number is kind of low. If we follow the trajectory of what you've done over the past ten years, the potential is that the fire department could go all the way up to fifty-five thousand calls by the year twenty fifty. So I think we're safe to say that somewhere between, in the middle there, if we were to draw a line, we'd say that, that it's our, our thought that by the year twenty forty, the fire department's gonna be running about forty thousand calls, or roughly about thirty-three percent more than what they're, what they're doing right now. The population trends that we've come up with, again, are based on the historical, the, the changes in the call volume over the last couple of years. And what's interesting to note is that almost every fire department has had a significant increase over the last two years in their call volumes primarily related to COVID. It changed the dynamic enough so that, that call shifting between residential and commercial is changing, people were using EMS more, so that there have been some change, so that in the year twenty twenty-one, the fire department had a ten and a half percent increase over the prior year. That's a remarkable, remarkable call jump in the volume for a fire department. We don't know yet if that's gonna be something that's gonna continue on at that rate. Over the last five years, there's probably about a three percent increase per year for calls, which likely is due to more so to changes in the healthcare industry and how people are approaching their healthcare than there is about changes in demographic, demographic growth. So our projections are about forty thousand a year by the year twenty forty, and that's based upon a three percent growth in call volume over the next twenty years or so. Right now, this is where your fire stations are located throughout the city. We're gonna spend some time on a couple of these and go into a little bit more detail, but pay a specific note over the area around I two ninety-one, or Route two ninety-one and I seventy, in that there's no restation down there, as well as Station ten and Station nine. We're gonna talk about those two a little bit, as those are the two that we're recommending to actually be moved. Population density for the city, largely on the west side, I think you know is where most of your population is, and there is the call volume is, which we'll talk about momentarily on that. But also on here to note is that the population density on the south-central part of town near two ninety-one and I seventy also has a pretty significant density of population there, and there's no fire stations down in that area. This is a plot point map of where fire calls have incurred over the last five years. Fire calls are, in this particular display here, fire calls are those fires where a unit actually shows up and there's actually a fire, and they have to do something in order to put the fire out, or that the fire has been extinguished, but there was a fire there. And on an average, the fire department experiences about one and a half of those per day over the last five years. So it, it happens throughout the town. And similar to the population density, the bulk of those are on the west side, on the, on the west side of the town. EMS or ambulance calls, not a whole lot different than that. Most of that is happening on the west side of town where the density is at. One of the things that we don't, that we did not graphically display is there are a significant number of calls that don't match the criteria for what we call fire and EMS calls. So calls that require the fire department to respond to, but don't, that don't necessarily have a fire, might be a stuck elevator, or a fire alarm that's going off inadvertently, or somebody's cooking smoke set off the smoke detector. Those, those make up probably a good twenty-five percent of the call volume that the fire goes on, I'm sorry, that the fire department goes on, and those are mostly located on the west side as well. And so, we end up with is this, what we call this heat map, which is where we actually put all that stuff together, and we give you some idea where the, where the bulk of your fire protection, or I should say, your fire activity is going on. The majority of the calls are certainly happening south of Station one, and north of Station four, extend all the way to the west towards Station three. But then there are also hotspots near Station two, near Station seven, and Station six, and then on the south side, as we mentioned before, near two ninety-one and I seventy, you certainly have a high call volume down there, but you have no fire station down there. And what that translates to is that the other, other fire stations around there then have to respond to that area, and then that actually increases your response times across the entire city because you have a high call volume without, without a fire station nearby. There are two standards, main standards that fire departments go by when they talk about whether or not the service level is sufficient for the community. One is ISO, International Services Organization, which rates your fire department based on communications, the demographic makeup of the fire department, and your water supply. And as, as you probably know, the fire department and your city rates as a Class Two, which is extraordinary, it's very exceptional, Class One being the highest, and so you have a very remarkable fire department as it is for its capabilities. But one of the standards that's in there that it talks about is the fact that they like to see all fire stations, or as many fire stations as possible, within a one and a half miles of their residences. And that pretty much guarantees a fairly quick response time, that when somebody calls nine-one-one, they're gonna get a fire truck there fairly quickly. And so, they evaluate all the properties in your community, and they say how many of them are within one and a half miles of a fire station. And in this case, since the, the main unit for putting out a fire is a pumper, the criterion is written in such a way that they say how many, how many, how much of our property is within one and a half mile of a pumper. And in your case right now, you have sixty percent of your community is within one and a half miles of a pumper or a fire station. So that's standard number one. The second standard is a, is a standard by the National Fire Protection Association. The main one that we look for, or we look at when we're talking about responses is, what is known as NFPA seventeen-ten, and it's the standard that basically identifies how many people it takes to put out a fire, how long it takes for a unit to get there, how long does it take for all the units to get there? And what they do is they look at, they look at where you're at and the ability for the fire department to respond, and they have a four-minute travel time that they say is suggested, and I mean suggested here, it's, it's a standard, so it's not mandatory, but it's, it's a suggested standard for fire department to arrive within four minutes of them rolling out the door. The four minutes is not an arbitrary number, the four minutes comes from two things. One is when you look at how a fire grows from its very incipient, from the very incipient stages, starting all the way to its very significant flashover dangerous portion of there, there's about a four-minute roughly time at which time intervention can take place, and then the fire can be quickly resolved, put out, little danger to the firefighters that are going in, and a high chance of a rescue being able to be accomplished. Once you get above four minutes, then all of a sudden, the curve actually increases significantly, and this is all detailed in the report if you saw that. The curve goes up significantly, and you get a lower likelihood of survival for residents that are, that are particularly in the building, you get a higher risk to your firefighters as they are approach, as they are trying to put the fire out, and then you also have greater content and structural damage that comes along there. So the standard is really to try to get somebody there within four minutes. The second aspect of that is when you look at medical calls. And the standard that is taught to first responders is that when you have a cardiac arrest, which is where your heart stops completely, for every one minute that that heart does not have its normal beat, you lose ten percent of survivability. And so, by the time you get down to four minutes, you've lost forty percent. If the response time to somebody who's in cardiac arrest is eight minutes without CPR intervention, without AED, automatic external defibrillating devices, you have a really low likelihood of survivability with a cardiac arrest. So their recommendation under the American Heart Association is that they like to have somebody provide advanced life support intervention within four minutes of your rest. So those two numbers there correlate and kind of put up that four-minute standard of which you would like to have a fire department vehicle arrive at the, at the initiation of one of these events. And within your community right now, about sixty-three percent of your area is accessible within that four-minute standard. Now, some people think that that standard and aiming for a hundred percent is one of the things that you have to try to achieve, and the reality is, is you're never gonna achieve a hundred percent on the standard. Usually, the standard is higher and can be achieved more in a densely, more densely populated area because your fire stations are closer. You've got more call volume, so you're justified having the fire stations there so they can get there. But when you get into rural areas that don't have a call volume, and they have long response times to be able to do that, to get there, it's really unachievable to get a four-minute response time to do that. Sometimes in the rural areas, and even in some of your areas, you can have eight, ten-minute responses for that. So a hundred percent is not achievable. But you do have the ability to say what is achievable and what is not. So in this particular case here, sixty-three percent is where you're at right now. Maybe at some point in the future, you say, you know what, we wanna aim for sixty-five percent, or we wanna aim for seventy percent, or whatever it is. It really is a determination on your part, because obviously, excuse me, obviously, the higher the standard you go, the more cost that comes along with that, both from resources and personnel and staff that goes with it, as well as the fact that if you try to raise the standard without putting resources in it, you create greater risk by putting more people into busier situations or situations where they may not have the right staffing or sourcing for that. So that's obviously a call for elected officials to make within each community. On that ISO standard, you also have ladder truck criteria. The pumper, the pumper, for those of you who are not familiar all the, with the mechanics of a fire department, the pumper is the main vehicle that's used for putting out the fire because they carry all the water, they have the ability connected to the fire hydrants, they carry the hose, and the crews around there, that's their, their, in most cases, ninety-eight percent of the time, their first and foremost responsibility is to put the fire out. Behind them, or alongside them, is the truck company. The truck company comes in, and what they do is their responsibility is multiple, is multiple. They're the ones that perform the rescues, they're the ones that's, they're the ones that create the environment that is suitable to make survivability much more tenable or a greater chance of surviving within the house, and they also make the environment much safer for firefighters to go in and actually, for able to put the fire out. They do that through opening up windows, they do that through opening, cutting up the, or opening up the roof and allowing the smoke to come out. And so, the fire, so the ladder trucks are really responsible for complementing the pumper that goes in there. But because they don't typically, typically, and it depends on the communities, and they're, typically, the ladder truck only goes on possible fires, they don't have nearly the response time and go out as, as much as the pumpers do, so you usually don't have a, a density of ladder trucks that you do with a pumper. And in your particular case here in Independence, there's two ladder trucks, Truck One and Truck Two, and ISO likes to see them with, looks to see at how many properties they have within two and a half minutes of a ladder truck response, or two and a half miles, I'm sorry. And you have forty-two percent of your community now lies within two and a half miles of one of the ladder trucks. So that kind of sets the groundwork for where you're currently at right now. The last one is what we call effective response force. Under NFPA seventeen-ten, again, which is the standard that is written for career fire departments, we mentioned the fact that they identify that they would like to have the first unit arriving on the scene within four minutes for medical reasons and starting the attack on the fire for those situations. But the NFPA seventeen also goes, seventeen-ten also goes through, and they identify three different scenarios where they talk about if we're gonna have a fire in each of these different scenarios, how many people does it actually take to put the fire out, and what exactly are those tasks to be able to do that? They use a single-family structure, they use a multifamily structure, and they use a, a retail commercial space for identifying how many people need to do specific tasks in order to do it. And when you look at the standard and read it and see all the different tasks that firefighters are spelled out, the thing that they, that they recommend, and is necessary, is that all the tasks that need to be done, almost none of them are sequential tasks. They're all tasks to be accomplished simultaneously. So as fast as you can get all these people there, the more that they can accomplish all these different tasks, the, the greater the likelihood that you're gonna have success. And so, the number of people that they have, that they've identified to say in order to do this, to be able to do it successfully, is called an effective response force. And in the case of a single-family dwelling, it's fourteen firefighters. And they're, and again, in the standard, it's all spelled out firefighter one does this, two, three, all the way down to fourteen, and they take into accounts command and safety and extra help for, for rescue and things like that. And so, they recommend an effective response force for fourteen people, and that that effective response force arrives within eight minutes. So you want all fourteen of those people, all firefighters, to arrive within eight minutes. It's very easy to dispatch them, we can dispatch the entire city if, if the chief decides to do that. But the reality is, is due to travel times, they're not gonna get there. And so, right now, within the city, you have an area of about thirty-nine percent of the city where you actually can get that effective response force standard, that, that eight people there, I'm sorry, that fourteen people there in single-family dwelling fires that can be there within eight minutes. So on to the recommendations. We talked earlier about looking at that south-central part of town that had that call volume and that density where we showed that there were no, no stations down there. So recommendation number one is the fact that in order to keep response times lower or reduce them, you really do need to have a fire station down there. It's the, it's probably the, when you look at the call density map and where the fire stations are, it really is a hole, it's an obvious hole that, that if you wanna have an arrival of a unit within four minutes, you need to have a fire station down there. We've elected the area right near Route two ninety-one and I seventy. The report goes into a little bit more specifics about where to actually put it, and we're talking about actually a little bit north of I seventy. The rationale behind that's in the report, which I, I won't go into at this particular time here. So that's recommendation one, is the creation of a Station eleven with a pumper with the normal staffing that it has right now, four guys, four firefighters. The second recommendation that we're having is relocating stations nine and ten. Station nine is up in the far northeast corner of the city right now, Station ten is at the, at the southeast corner of the city, and I'm gonna start with Station ten first, because effectively, the two of them being removed are related to where they're at in the city right now. And so, Station ten, when you look at it in the far southeast corner over there, you notice that it's right up against the city boundaries, which is really not a good use of a firehouse to have it right up against the boundary, because it means it's not really centered in where the coverage is, and it needs to be, it needs to be there in order to be at its maximum effectiveness. So we're looking at moving Station ten farther to the northwest into the city away from, away from the limits. What that does is that actually supports the growth that's going down along Route two ninety-one and I seventy, and then Little Blue Parkway with all the commercial growth that's gonna going on, moves that station closer to the south end of that, which then gives you a fire station closer to where that growth is, and then also makes the response area for that particular station three-hundred-and-sixty degrees, so it's really gonna be center to its coverage area where it's at and make it much more effective. Now, the reason that we're doing that, that's just what I mentioned, but if we're gonna do that, you also have, at the southeast portion of the district, you have a subdivision near Pink Hill Road and Route seven that has a reasonable amount of call volume that right now is in Station ten's response area. And so, they're the ones that cover it if you're gonna call out to the southeast area. And if you're gonna move Station ten to the northwest, that actually takes that area and puts them out beyond that four-minute response time. I think if I remember correctly, it was about five minutes, five and a half minutes out there. So in order to cover for that, move a Station ten northeast, I'm sorry, to the northwest, we're suggesting that Station nine, which is the least busiest company of the entire department, actually moved farther south, possibly to where the entrance to Lake City is. And then, that actually moves them into the area that can cover that area at Pink Hill Road and Route seven within the four-minute response time. The book, the, the report that we gave you shows you by company what all the different responses are for them. And if you notice when you look at Station nine, I would say probably ten percent of Station nine's responses are actually within district, are within their district, almost all of them are outside supporting other stations. So there's not gonna be a significant loss by moving them farther south. Certainly, that area up there will have a longer response time from where they're at right now, but the call volume up in that area is fairly low right now. So those are the three main recommendations that we're making. The building of a new Station eleven with a pumper, and then the relocating of Station ten to the northwest, and relocating of Station nine farther south. As a reminder, real quick, this is what we said are where your EMS calls, your ambulance calls are across the city, the bulk of them are on the, are on the west side. And the reason I wanted to point that out is because there's another type of unit that the fire department has, which is rescues. Rescues are units that provide a variety of functions, all based on the need that is present within the department or on the scene. They can be as large as six- or seven-man units that are big massive trucks that carry tons of equipment, that only respond to fires in special unique situations, or they can be very small with as little as two people, which perform a separate function different than, or than what the big rescues do. Independence uses two rescues, they use Rescue One and Rescue Two out of Stations one and two, and they use the rescues in a way that actually makes the preservation both in cost and in, and in maintenance and readiness for the pumpers by having them in place and running on ambulance calls. A lot of fire departments, when an ambulance call comes in, they just send the fire truck out there, and that after a time begins to take a toll on the vehicles, and it can get to be very expensive. Normal fleet time for a large fire truck is typically as a frontline vehicle is about ten years. As a frontline, you can usually get another five to ten years out of it as a reserve, but the more you run that vehicle, obviously, the shorter its lifespan is gonna be. So a vehicle that is normally costing right now about eight-hundred thousand, actually, you said just seven-hundred and forty was you just purchased, they could be, they could be running up to, up to a million dollars now. You keep that in the station, and you run a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar pickup truck with an, with a bunch of rescue equipment on it, and you run that in place of the big one, instead of the big pumpers going up there. The rescue truck carries all sorts of unique rescue equipment, it carries a lot of the same equipment that the big rescue trucks carry, they provide a backup mechanism for filling gaps on fires that the engines and the ladder trucks can't get, and then they, they, instead of running that, like I said, that, that large expensive truck, you just run the, the small one. And those last five to seven years, you replace them at a third of the cost of a regular fire truck, and you can go through those much quicker and save yourself a lot of money. And so, what we're recommending is that based on where the call volume is when you look at that, right now, there's a, there's a rescue at Station one, that's the purple up to the north and the blue to the south, which is Rescue Two. We're recommending that a third rescue be added at Station seven, which is the one towards the center of the district there, and moving Rescue Two from its location right now at Station two out to Station five, which is at the southwest corner of the city. And then, that pretty much balances all three of those rescues from basically the center of the city onto the west. If in chance you needed, if the call volume significantly picked up out west, and it was predominantly learned that there are ambulance calls, you certainly could put another, another rescue out, you know, farther west and do a rebalancing in the future. But as of right now, and probably for at least the next ten years, having a third rescue at one, seven, and five will make a big difference. And not only, not only with this, but they would be assigned on structured fires when we go back to the ERF, and having the, the right number of people coming into the, to a fire, that number would also be enhanced in there as well. So you would definitely be increasing the numbers, the response capabilities on that front there too. Long-term, as growth continues to go out east, we're recommending a third truck company out on the east side of the city. Right now, the city runs with two, Truck One and Truck Two. Pretty much, they're in really good locations compared to where the call volume is, but you certainly can see that running along the mid-center of the town there, that there's quite a few calls over there, and as development continues to move east, you would like to have another truck company up there. If you don't have a truck company out there, then those engines that are responding to those calls for fires out there potentially have a long time before that truck company comes up, and it makes the, and makes the, the situation much more a long time before that truck company comes up and it makes the situation much more dangerous for them because now they have to go in without having the environment ventilated, and they have to take everything on their own, and potentially could be up to five to seven minutes before that next vehicle gets there. We're not recommending that, or suggesting that it has to be done right now, but it's that it's possible depending on how fast your growth materializes out along Blue River, I'm sorry, Little Blue Parkway in that area there, that just be aware that we think a third truck could be on the horizon for you in the future for that. This is an organizational chart. The pink chart at the top is the organizational chart of the fire department right now, and we're being a bit dramatic on the chart down on the bottom. But the chart on the bottom really talks about what we call span of control right now, and how many units does a battalion chief, who's the shift supervisor, the person in charge of the shift, have answering to him, and how many people is he responsible for. There is one battalion chief on duty in the city right now for everything that goes on, and he's responsible for all the day-to-day activities that happen administratively and operationally. He makes sure that everything goes according to plan. He makes sure that all the vehicles are staffed appropriately, and right now, he has 14 people answering to him. I don't know if you guys were part of taking any of the incident command system classes that were offered by FEMA for disaster management, but recommended spans of control on emergency scenes are five to seven people per supervisor. And so when this battalion chief goes on the scene, he has everybody answering to him, and he has absolutely nobody else in between in order to be able to deal with the incident. So potentially on some fires, he could have up to 14 people on the radio calling him at one time, telling him what's going on or what they need or anything like that. And again, against the recommended standards, you really want to aim for five to seven in order to do that. So we're recommending a second battalion chief be added that splits that down the middle so that there would be no more than seven units that a battalion chief would be accountable for. That the second battalion chief could act on an emergency scene, on a fire, as another officer to help relieve the load on command, and also at the same time, he could be a incident commander for another scene, for another fire that's going on within Independence. Right now, your city has about a simultaneous call rate of about 53%, which basically means that any, or in the city at any time, you have at least two calls going on simultaneously. So it's entirely possible that you actually could have two incidents going on where you need a battalion chief being in command of those incidents, and you don't have one that's on duty to do that and a callback one has to commit. And so we're absolutely recommending that a second battalion chief be added to the shift there. Training. Right now, there is one training officer for 177 firefighters. I can tell you that one training officer for 177, you could probably give him just handling records for 177 people and probably be pretty darn close to using all 40 hours a week handling training and standards that have to be up to that. Training officers should be out in the fire stations. They should be out on scenes, training guys what to do. They should be writing lesson plans for the individual company officers, for companies to work together at the training ground, at the fire station. And you really could use quite a few more in your training department. And so we're recommending, within the budget or the finances that you've got coming through from the tax increase, we're recommending that you add at least two more training people to the training division. 911 dispatched. We took a look at the dispatch protocol and how the 911 center handled primarily EMS calls because there's a good portion of the fire department responses right now where the fire department is dispatched or a fire truck is dispatched, and they pull out onto the ramp, and then the dispatcher tells them, "You're not needed anymore," and they back up into the station. Two o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning happens a couple times. Every time that happens, it just contributes to fatigue and any number of different things. And by all means, it's not even efficient to start a fire truck 50 feet and then turn around and tell them to go back into the station. The main reason why that happens is because of the procedure that is used at the 911 center where somebody who calls 911 says they need an ambulance. We'll use that for now. And the dispatcher takes all the information that they have, put it into the computer, and then when they're done, they dispatch the fire department, and then they take the information and they send it over to AMR, who then sends the ambulance. AMR says, "Well, you know what? We don't really need a fire truck right now." So AMR turns around, they call back the dispatch center, and they say, "Well, you know, we don't need that fire truck." Well, by now, the fire truck is sitting on the ramp, and that's what makes the fire truck turn around and then go back inside. So we're recommending two options or two possibilities to consider on how to address that situation. Option number one is that the 911 caller, when the dispatch center or the dispatcher answers the phone, as soon as they know that it's an ambulance call, they route the call to AMR. It's not uncommon, as much as we like to think that, oh my goodness, as soon as somebody calls a dispatcher, they don't want to be forwarded to another phone call, and that's true. But there are plenty of communities out there that first need to make the distinction of how best to handle that caller. And so what they do is as soon as they learn there's an EMS call, they forward the call on to the dispatcher for the EMS system, who then puts, who does all the information. And then if they need a fire truck, then calls back to the fire department and say, "Oh, by the way, can you send a fire truck as well?" So that's one option. The advantage to that, obviously, is that AMR gets it faster. They make the determination. Plus, AMR does EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatching, which our Independence 911 Center does not do. 911, or I'm sorry, EMD is where the dispatcher can actually perform some basic first aid intervention over the phone, telling people, you know, "Start CPR," or "Do this," or "Do that." Independence dispatchers are not trained to do that. So moving that, or having that shuffle of sending the cards, call to AMR, prevents the fire department from being dispatched automatically as well as potentially providing EMD dispatching to the, EMD services to the caller. The other option that they have is to actually have the technology in place to have AMR and the dispatcher stay on the line at the same time. And so when a caller calls for an ambulance and they need an ambulance, the dispatcher or the call taker takes the phone, says, "Standby," they forward the call on to AMR, and then they stay on the phone, and they listen. And then they make the determination separately from the AMR dispatcher whether or not they need a fire truck. And then there's not, you don't have that loop for AMR to have to call back to the fire department and request the fire department. But it means you have to have the technology in place in order for the dispatcher and AMR to stay on the phone at the same time and listen, and that's not in place right now. So two possibilities for improving that turnaround time for ambulance calls. Annual cost. Just to give you some suggestion on the cost, we identified the staffing costs for both the training officers, excuse me, the additional battalion chief, a new engine and a new rescue. Those are outlined in the orange column there, and they begin in 2023 with an extra $3.2 million and end up in 2032 with a cost of about $4.8 million. And the point is, is that those numbers there are below what's projected as revenue for what you're going to get off of the increased sales tax. The details are actually in the report. Remember that you passed an ordinance a while back that basically said the increase in the fire taxes can be equally split between capital and staffing. And what we show here is that the orange, the yellow and the orange lines on the bottom are where capital and personnel costs are. The blue line is where the total of those are, and the red line at the very top is where the projected revenue is going to be. So effectively, what we're saying is those changes that we're putting in within the ordinances that you've passed for splitting personnel and capital expenses for that, we expect are going to fall within what's projected for the revenue that you're going to get off of that sales tax increase. So before I go into these suggested steps here, the chief had a strategy planning session last Thursday that began to look at these elements here and talk about a plan. And I'm going to let him kind of talk about where he is with the strategic plan to these, and then I've got just a couple more slides to wrap up.
So just real quickly, as he'll allude to, he's got just some of the top summary points of where we're at. Last week, approximately 20 of us from the department met, both labor, management, administration, all levels of the fire service, to start our strategic plan, coming off and looking at the recommendations that are provided in this report and how we can set about and start to work on those things. Like you said, it's a master plan. So it has a 10-year to 15-years that it may all take to get completed, but we need to find a start point and start doing the things that we think are most important. So we've started that plan. While he's going to talk about their suggested steps, we may or may not be there. That's what we're making that final determination in the strategic plan, because these steps are more of a master plan step where we're getting more in detail in the strategic plan to say exactly which ones we're going to move forward on. Hopefully I'll have you something by the end of the month or first of next month.
So going, when we look at these steps here, we're talking about, you know, how fast can we implement them? What's the cost? What's the benefit to the community? How fast does that change? And came up with this sequence here where the first three on here, actually the first four of these are all relatively quickly, but that's obviously a matter of perspective as far as time is concerned. One is that we establish a second battalion chief. Two is create a new rescue. Three at Station 7, relocate Rescue 2 to Station 5. That's going to require the purchase of another vehicle, which, we were just talking about that this afternoon, can be anywhere from six months to two years, depending on the type of vehicle that you're getting, if not longer. Create a new Station 11 with Pumper 11. We expect that that's going to take a while for a number of different reasons, property purchases and hiring practices, buying a fleet, that kind of stuff. But certainly to recommend that you at least start that process as quickly as possible because that south end of town really is lacking as far as a fire station is concerned. And then create two additional training positions as quickly as possible. And then in the longer term, and again, as the chief mentioned, we're not, as a part of a master plan, this is something that we're expecting would take probably at least five years, if not 15 years longer to be able to do this, depending on finances and other priorities that you have with the community. But then do new Stations 9 and 10. Ideally, you do them together at the same time so that that coverage area on the southeast side isn't compromised for any period of time. Rebuild Station 8 in the training facility. We really didn't talk about going into a lot of depth about the number of stations that should just rebuild because of the physical condition that they're in or problems in their environment that they have. But Station 8, Stations 5 and 6 are those that we're recommending be rebuilt for structural reasons or problems with the environment that they're in right now. Station 8 is a little bit north of the existing training facility, but the training facility is not really adequate for really what it could be. It is definitely a benefit. It's better than nothing, but there are a lot of ways that can be enhanced. We detail that in the report. And then rebuild Stations 5 and 6 and add in addition onto Station 2. So what does that give you, or where does that get you, I should say? Your travel times, we talked earlier as to how many of your community is within four-minute travel time. With the addition of Engine 11, it would go from 60% up to 68% of your community. So about a 10% increase on that one. And then when we include the third truck in the end, potentially your effective response force or that ability to get everybody there at the same time then goes from 39% to 50%. So those are some pretty significant improvements in your ability to provide service as well as take care of your firefighters. So with that, I appreciate the time and the listening, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Yes. Thank you. Just checking my math on additional staff. So two training officers, an additional battalion chief per shift?
Correct.
So that's one person added to the battalion chief.
So three hires.
So an additional three.
Correct.
And then an additional station with four people, and so that's multiple shifts. So that's what?
That's 12 for that station.
Okay. So that's a 10% increase in the number of staff that we have now. Is that rough math?
I think you were at 170. So, yeah, okay, right.
And so looking at your trajectory on costs for personnel, staffing, and facilities, does that include all costs for those employees? So their equipment, their health insurance, their pension payment, and their overtime?
Includes wages and benefits. We didn't go into specific equipment. That cost, like turnout gear for them, is nominal compared to the costs for, you know, wages and benefits. But yes, those things were applied to the costs.
Okay. Thank you.
And then you also missed two per the rescue for three shifts, so that's six more.
So about 15% increase in your staffing?
Yeah.
Okay. And do you, I know, Chief, that you're in the midst of your strategic planning. You think that the facility modifications is a five-year undertaking, a 10-year undertaking? Do you have kind of a pacing schedule?
So that depends on a couple of things. One is it depends obviously on the actual finances that come through. Number two, it depends on how you choose to finance as well, whether or not you do a bond or whether or not you want to have, you know, cash on hand before you do some of those things to be able to do that. And then it also depends on how aggressive you want to be with the facility changes. Right now, everything that we identified within the, for the facilities, with the exception of maybe adding a place for Truck 3 down the road, all of your stations probably need some work on them, if not actually replacements that are on here. So I would say any of those at any time could be jumped on and actually deal with problems that they're dealing with right now. But in recognition of your finances and how much it's going to take and the energy to do all that stuff, we're saying that over the next five, 10 years is probably more realistic for that.
And when you did your population projections, one thing about Independence is our current population is aging. But when you see population growth, sort of that re-energizing of suburban communities, they tend to be much younger. So I would imagine that your linear growth will flatten out, so you would likely be lower on your scale instead of higher on your scale. I don't think you can take your current projected utilization and say, "If you add 10%, you add 10% more calls" because the types of people coming are different. So I'm just, did you take that?
No, you're correct. I think there's a lot of factors that come into play there. Obviously, we do a linear projection. We don't necessarily know, well, five years, you're going to have this, but 10 years, this is going to happen, whatever. So we do a linear projection just in order to be able to match it up. I would agree with you that there could be fluctuations that go on there. The elderly are definitely, you know, have a greater demand on EMS services than the younger populations do. However, with the elderly, if you, will be replaced by an increased population because the younger population will have more family. So there's kind of a trade-off a little bit with that.
And when you think about procedure changes with dispatch, you know, the average person doesn't understand why a pumper truck would show up when they've got a sprained ankle and need to go to the hospital. They're like, "I don't need fire folks." So that one seems like a no-brainer. But the partner that you need in that is AMR. And so they have to have a sequencing computer system that can interact with our dispatch, and so are we expecting that there will be costs on their side?
So one of the things that we're recommending is, one of the major recommendations is for you to enhance the relationship that you have with AMR through a contractual recommendation versus permit or license, through a permitting process that you have right now. Part of your contractual interaction with them could be, we want to enhance our responses. AMR is, if I remember correctly, they're also in the process of shifting their dispatch system to somewhere in Kansas, I believe, too. And they're looking at regionalizing some of that. So some of that may already be there or be in place. And so, but there are some technology elements that absolutely would have to be a part of that relationship. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Go ahead. Proceed.
Just a couple of questions. The list of recommendations, the first page of the, yeah?
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Let me go back. I think I read them to you. I didn't have them up there, but this is basically...
Is that the order that your, the priorities are and your opinion?
It's in order, but I would say that all of these could be done simultaneous, not all. Some of them could be done simultaneously. I think the, from our perspective, or from the perspective that we took, we were looking at what first is going to enhance protection to the community. What was the first and foremost doing that? And then, once we figured what those adjustments were, then the next step beyond that is what do we do to improve staff's ability to do it? So effectively... So effectively, the very first priority really would be starting station 11.
Well, I would agree with that, but, but also what, what concerns me is, I, I do, I do agree, we, we need to increase the battalion chief role. But we, I think simultaneously you have to increase the additional training positions. One person responsible for 177 firefighters being trained. And I'm sorry, but I want our guys trained to the hilt, overtrained if necessary. And doesn't sound like we're getting that done with the current personnel that we have. So I would hope that, chief, and you know more about this than I do, but establishing those training positions, maybe, I mean, start looking at it in the next budget year to, to expand that and, and figure out what we're lacking for these guys and the women and men of our department. And then of course, station 11 has to be a priority in my mind because we've changed some of the, we've gone from retail to residential retail in that area. But I'm wondering if we have, if we're being aggressive enough with the equipment that we're going to have at station 11? Because we also have industrial not far from where you're wanting to put it as well. Was that in your study or consideration as well?
We, we did look at it from a, from a pumper ladder truck perspective. And ladder two, truck two is the one that covers that area of town right now. But that certainly truck three, which would be farther north, could cover the north, could cover, could cover more of that north end. The run volume isn't necessarily, the demand isn't quite there yet. But certainly as, it depends on, really on whether, on how proactive you want to be doing things ahead of time. A lot of, a lot of communities will actually wait until they see the numbers going up before they decide they want to do something. A lot of, and then there's other communities that say, we feel they care, fairly confident that this is going to be happen and therefore let's not wait till the problem develops. Let's do it ahead of time.
Well, we're, we're expanding that area now.
Right.
With, in my mind, with an improper strategy, you know, for, to, to, to be able to respond to whatever the need is for the growth. Response times are, are kind of important to me as a homeowner, since my homeowner's insurance is affected by it too. So I want to be able to make sure that we have stationed adequate responses and, and equipment. And also, is there any discussion on, do we need or should we have hazmat anywhere in this as well?
There is a dedicated hazmat unit within the city. I don't know if you want to talk about the regional one that, you mentioned, but the, so.
Okay, all right. So we'll see that. We'll see that too, okay. So some of these questions I, I think will probably be answered, so. And then the only other thing is it always makes me nervous when we're, when we're talking about a private entity like AMR joining in with a public sector and their for-profit we're not. And so I want to look at that relationship. Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker? On the, on the side with AMR, or do we currently have a contract with them?
So city code allows for a provider in the city. They are licensed by the city and subject to inspection, but we don't have a service contract like, like you and I would think of a contract with them.
Okay. So is that something that maybe you and I just talk about?
Be happy to, absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right. That's, that's what I have. Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you, chief.
Great, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you and what's, what's next?
Absolutely. So we'll hop over to our other Public Safety Division, the Police Department. I'm going to ask the chief to join me and give us just a moment to get set up.
Okay.
Deharu? Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Zach Walker, City Manager. Again, want to thank Chief Short and his team for that presentation and in part, not just because of the good work that they've done, but you had an opportunity to see the input and the end result of when our voters support a sales tax initiative, the results that we're able to do with that. So able to invest in our personnel, our stations, our equipment and our training and our fire department. Tonight, I want to talk to you about another sales tax opportunity that may be in front of you that we're asking the, the council to consider. And that is imposition of a sales tax on marijuana, recreational marijuana here in the city of Independence. So tonight, again, I'd like to speak to you about the 3% sales tax option on recreational adult-use marijuana that is an option for this community. The first opportunity that our voters would have to consider that would be this April, April the 4th. There are several cities here on the Missouri side, 11 at last count, here in the Kansas City metropolitan area that are considering an April election. And then just earlier this afternoon, the Jackson County Legislature has voted to place this issue in front of voters within the county. The ordinance that's been first read in front of the council was written with broad input from all of the different 11 municipalities here in the metro that have been working on this. And you may notice it's, you know, speaks to things like code enforcement and neighborhood services. And that is because we do anticipate some additional regulatory and administrative responsibilities for the city, which I'll get into more later. And as you all know, in the general fund, which is scarce competition for resources, we really, we're contemplating the need to have additional revenues to support things like neighborhood livability, neighborhood services that we know are a council priority. But another critical need that we want to speak to you about tonight as we have this, this public conversation are to dedicate those revenues toward core funding for a public safety campus. The chief is going to speak to this here in just a minute, but we want to make that case to you as well, that that is among our most critical needs that we're facing from a public safety standpoint. Not that we've solved everything with our fire department, but we've certainly taken a big step forward with the tax that was approved last November. Regardless, if we do choose to press forward, that ordinance that's in front of the council would need to be amended at your meeting next Tuesday if we're desiring to place this on the agenda before the voters for April the 4th. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the opportunity in more detail. This past November, voters here in Missouri passed an amendment to our constitution legalizing the recreational use of marijuana. Within that constitutional amendment is the ability for cities and counties across our state to ask voters to impose a 3% sales tax on the purchase of, of recreational marijuana. Again, the first chance we have to do this is this coming April. This past December, just a couple of weeks ago, the Independence Chamber of Commerce considered this. They knew this was something the council was starting to talk about. And I did want to share with you that they have already formally voted to endorse moving forward with this sales tax initiative to place that before the voters. Talk quickly about the fiscal impact. And if you'd like more data on this, I would direct you or any interested citizens to look at the agenda item cover sheet for the ordinance that's before the council. We provided quite a bit of detail on the methodology about how we came up with these figures, but using some conservative estimates and based largely on the medical marijuana gross sales among the four dispensaries here in our community, we estimate that that tax at 3% would bring in somewhere between 270 to $615,000 a year. Now, obviously, medical marijuana requires a card, a doctor's prescription. There's a little bit more of a hurdle to acquiring that whereas recreational, you know, you just have to be of adult age to acquire and be in possession of that. So these numbers potentially could be larger. We've consulted with some of our peer cities of similar size in Colorado where this has been legalized a much longer period of time. They're seeing higher numbers there and we do estimate, and industry experts do estimate that this will grow over time. But right now, just to provide you with a conservative early look, these are the figures of the range that we think this might bring in. Regardless of the use that would be tied to this sales tax, it would be staff's recommendation if this were to be used for, I should say, if this were to be used for a public safety use, that we have the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee provide that monitoring and accountability. That group is doing that for the public safety sales tax for both police and fire right now. They're doing that for the use tax portion that's allocated to the police department. We believe this would be a natural use as well. That group, of course, is comprised of Independence residents that are appointed by the city council. They meet and report semi-annually to the council about revenues that are collected and the appropriateness of all the expenditures that come in. And then, of course, not only are those reports presented to this governing body, but are made publicly available through the city's website for everybody to see and make sure that those tax dollars are being spent for the intended voter-approved usage. So I do want to address the current ordinance that's been first read before the council and give a little bit of context again about why that's where it's at. When we began meeting with the 11 municipalities here in the Kansas City metro that are contemplating this, of course, different communities have different needs, but there are some commonalities and many cities felt that neighborhood quality of life issues would be important and Independence is no different. Beginning to speak to my community development director, Tom Skinnell, for budget purposes this year, we are not immune to the inflationary costs that we're seeing across the country in a lot of different areas. And the costs for dangerous building demolitions have increased by about $200,000 over last year. The cost of providing property maintenance cleanups, things like mowing tall grass and weeds, picking up trash, litter, debris on a property have increased by about $100,000. You know, the, the caseload remains strong there. We currently have 223 active dangerous building cases and about 8,000 violations reported in the month of December for, a year to date, for property maintenance issues. Again, things like tall grass and weeds, trash, et cetera. So the idea at a broad level and talking with our peers was, let's apply these dollars to that ongoing issue that we know is a community priority, generally speaking, for neighborhood services, neighborhood quality of life issues.
Mr. City Manager?
Sir.
Can I ask you just, on the, on the trash cleanup, are we talking environmental cleanup like what we've discussed in the past with?
Yeah, we would anticipate that being all-encompassing. Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. And again, I, I don't want to leave anybody confused about that. This chart again illustrates where we see the general fund currently without any future changes. Trying to add an additional $200,000 for dangerous building demos and $100,000 for environmental neighborhood cleanup issues is going to be difficult in a budget where our expenses just to do what we're doing continue to increase and revenues increase, but not at the same pace that we're seeing those expenditures increase. So we don't see the general fund as really a viable option for any new initiatives without service reductions somewhere else in the organization. Which brings us to one of the critical needs that continues to stare us down and, and frankly continues to get worse by the day as it's ignored. Our current police station, which is of course located over here at the corner of Truman and Memorial Drive, was built in 1973. Back in 2017, the city staff at the direction of the council partnered with an architectural firm to complete a facility master plan for the police department. And the report had a lot of extensive findings, but a couple of key takeaways that I would like to share with you. The existing building in 2018 had identified $10 million in deferred maintenance needs and found that at that time in $2018, the city was spending about $1.85 million a year on annual facility repairs. And these aren't any kind of glamorous things. These are roof patchings and trying to keep water invasion, leakage, HVAC, these kind of just basic fix-it sort of issues, but to the tune of about $1.9 million. That study went on to look at the cost of renovating that building, not to just bring it up to life safety issues, but also to address the growing police force that has come to us since 1973. And that report found that building a new facility was far more cost-effective than the cost of renovating the existing facility over there. The report went on, just for historical purposes, went on to recommend building this on a central police campus where the new public safety dispatch center is located adjacent to the Independence Utility Center at the old MCI hospital. This is where the city-owned land is. Once the city acquired that property and demoed the MCI, renovated the old medical office building for the utility center and built the dispatch center. That left enough space to have a consolidated combined public safety campus at that space. And that's what the report found to be the most cost-effective option. In 2019, the construction firm, J.E. Dunn, did a follow-up study for the city on those 2018 findings from the architecture firm. And they affirmed the findings of that report, but drilled down into three main critical issues. Life safety issues, they found that the existing facility has significant design and construction issues that threaten both police officers and general public's safety. Operational issues, they found that as the department has grown over the year, the facility has not had major renovations that are necessary to maintain operating efficiencies. The current space no longer meets the department's operational needs. And finally, maintenance, the building has had water infiltration issues since its inception and continues through today. The building has outlived its current useful life. Most recently, this past summer, I received a call from our chief of police letting me know that the HVAC units had failed again and we had to move our detainees that were in the detention unit to Sugar Creek for housing because it had become too hot and not safe to house them in our detention unit. So I would tell you, four years since that study was done, the situation has not improved. Construction costs have only increased. The health and safety issues have only gotten worse. We've been fortunate to add more personnel, but that means the building has just become more crowded. And though it may sound frivolous, we are competing for talent and we are seeing facilities across the metro that are newer and safer. That communicates volumes about how we prioritize and care about our public safety servants. Now, if I were at home, I would be wondering, well, don't you have a sales tax dedicated for Independence Police Department? And you're right, we do. We have a 1/8 cent sales tax, but it is set to expire in December of 2028, so just about five years from now. And more pressing, that tax primarily funds three different main issues. Fleet, so we don't run our vehicles as civilians the way a police officer does. They are driving 12-hour shifts. They're driving at intermittent speeds, lots of time idling. It's, so they put a lot of wear and tear on those vehicles. Number two, the mobile data terminal. So we don't want our police coming in, filling out reports. So we've installed a mobile workstation in each of those cars, which means expense there. And three, the radios. So beyond, with those three expenditures, yeah, there might be some special equipment or some new technology here or there that we're able to purchase, but not much. 1% of this sales tax budget goes toward facilities. And when you drill down on that, that is primarily the annual utility bills for all of our various police facilities, our headquarters, our special ops, our K-9 unit, that, those kind of things. Those are not facility repairs that I was mentioning. Those tend to be unbudgeted expenses that have to come out of the operating budget. This chart is one that I think drives home the point probably better than anyone I can make. What I have here are 10 different police facilities across the metropolitan area. And these aren't just police facilities. These are places where we are competing for police talent, for recruits and retaining our existing force. And if you just go to the bottom to make it simple, you can see that the average station... And if you just go to the bottom to make it simple, you can see that the average station among these 10 was either renovated or built, on average, in 2015, ours in 1973, at a cost of $21.7 million. So that means they've put in $21.7 million on average in each of these facilities. Again, we're spending $1.8, $1.9 million on repairs, but, you know, no major investment in renovations beyond, like, some fix-it things or the multi-purpose room that was done a few years ago, things of that nature, or other emergency life safety issues. For a city that's the fifth-largest in the state and the second-largest in the Kansas City metro on the Missouri side, our facility is about 10,000 square feet smaller than the average station, even though we serve a population that's about 50,000 more than any of these others, and have about 130 more sworn personnel and substantially more civilian personnel working in our police station. So, again, crowded, life safety issues, and not really sending a strong message about prioritization of public safety for new recruits and those we're trying to retain. So with that, I'm going to step aside and let the chief share with you a little bit more from a day-to-day perspective, what they're seeing, what they're experiencing within the facility, and the challenges that presents to him and his department, both operationally and in trying to attract people to work within the Independence Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Adam Desmond, Chief of Police, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wish I had better news for you this evening, but we'll keep the bad news rolling, I suppose. You know, the city manager mentions coming to work and recruitment and retention being one of our foremost challenges. All of you are aware of that, we've had those discussions here before. So, that is paramount. We've talked about in perspective the difference between 15 years ago, when I came on the police department, and us having 450 applicants for seven spots, today having 35 vacancies, and we're lucky if we can get five or seven applicants for those spots. So we are competing for the same talent. So as I go through this presentation, that talent and those dedicated individuals remains very high, and it, what I would like you to focus on is, is the facility and the conditions that I'm going to show you an attractor for good qualified talent for this city and putting our best foot forward, not only for the employees that we have currently today, but those that we are trying to attract and recruit? Or is it a detractor from recruitment standpoint? For the conditions of the building, I have broken down into four main areas. Apparently, I'm not smart enough to... Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. Just had to get the bearings here. So I've broken this down into main categories of safety hazards and challenges, spacing, space and parking needs, and then the two highest liability areas, property room and detention, which we'll go through, and then future training for our staff that remains paramount as we progress forward with the demands that are put on our law enforcement personnel, both sworn and civilian. So again, Mr. Walker mentioned the water seepage that has come in. What you are seeing is an array of photos throughout the department that frankly, I think Mr. Skinnell would probably agree, this probably should be deemed a dangerous building in some aspects. If you'll look down here in the center portion, these are electrical conduits and electrical switches to turn on the lights in our workout facility for our officers to go in and actually work out. All of that is water damage that has gone over those electrical facilities. Along with up here, you have stalagmite and calcification buildup within the locker rooms that they're expected to get in and out of their uniforms in, go home to their families. You have water staining across the tiles throughout the department on all three floors. Previous mitigation efforts included a bladder system that was put in between the ground floor and the first floor. As Mr. Walker pointed out, the water seepage into this facility has been there since its inception. Many years ago, they tried, at significant cost to the city, to put in this bladder between those two floors. It failed almost immediately. The recent remodel with partnership with the Kansas City Mavericks in the locker room that you'll see over here with this black area included the last-ditch effort to control the water seepage that was going on in our men's locker room and our women's locker room, and those are drip pans that catch the water and hope that it evaporates before it spills over. As you can tell from the stalagmites that are forming up here, we're not so successful in that regard. The tiles that have been removed and the ventilation shafts that are here showing all the water damage and water staining, along with additional down here in the lower-left corner with more calcification on electrical conduit is a fire hazard waiting to happen. If you look really hard in this evidence tape, which is somewhat of our officers' comical efforts to make work a little bit enjoyable amongst some difficult challenges, that is actually a collection of unknown black debris that continues to fall today out of the ventilation shafts in my office as well as other offices throughout the department. So we have collected that area. There has been sampling that has been done, but we have not received the results as to what is falling from the ventilation shaft that is very suspiciously black and dark. As Mr. Walker mentioned, the repair problems and repair costs continue to mount significantly this summer. As you all are aware, we put at almost a cost of $300,000 a brand-new roof on the facility, only to be told by the contractors that that had absolutely no bearing on the water seepage inside of the building and would not fix a single problem with the water. Mr. Walker mentioned the HVAC that had gone out not once, but twice throughout the building. We have frequent internet outages and power outages within the building, which creates significant problems with our public safety response and, as well as computers, networks, interviews that are going on with suspects. As you can imagine, in a technologically-driven society and world, we need those power supplies to be reliable and sturdy and robust so that we can continue to do what we do. So, as we continue, the worst of the news is not over. We've had raw sewage leaks multiple times inside of the police facility, to include dripping on personnel as they are at work. Again, under the lens of, could you imagine coming to work in this facility and does this attract people? Our first raw sewage leak occurred on the records unit, within the records unit, which includes the file room where we store all of our police records and files that we keep onsite that have not been stored offsite, that have to be dispersed to the public upon public request, as well as the storage room that is adjacent to that. You will see that here, the staining on the bottom of this box was some residual that was left over from that period of time. All of these are the files that are stored in that area. These ceiling tiles had to be replaced and new paint put on the walls. This is the storage room that is adjacent to that file storage room. Raw sewage came, and you can kind of see the new paint as it reflects off the ceiling and the light fixture there. All had to be repainted, covered in sewage. All of these are our employees' workstations out here. Next, we had the second-floor men's restroom, which is the administration floor. You can see the different ceiling tile here if you look closely. That is directly over these two urinals, and it was seeping raw sewage from the third floor up above as you went about your daily business. I can tell you, unfortunately, when I came up, I was a victim of that myself, so that is not just a myth, I can tell you. At first, I thought it was condensation, only to find out later, I was sadly mistaken. Then, last but not least, is the ground floor where our patrol happened to reside. Just for a little bit of levity, given the gravity of the topic, maybe I'm the magnet that keeps bringing this, because this area here happened to be my previous workstation before I moved up into the interim chief's role, before the desks were on the wall there and we had raw sewage that came down through this area, covered this entire desk where our patrol captains, two of the four of them at the time, were positioned for work. That all had to be biohazard cleaned and thus leading to some of the renovation that we have previously talked about. Unfortunately, our maintenance staff that continues to come out and put sleeves on the pipe, it is clay pipe that is there from its inception, not built for the industrial use that it has received, and has only advised us that it is a matter of time. It's not an if, another break happens, it is a when, given the age of the pipe that has gone through the entire building and facility. So, we continue to talk about the unsuccessful upkeep and the renovation is just trying to kick that can down the road. Let's talk about space and parking. We have grown and decentralized to a part, to a point of inefficiency operationally. We have our brand-new shiny example of our communication center out there, top right. We have the K-9 facility lower in the center there. The lower right is our special operations building, and all of those are at capacity. We continue to have substations in Inglewood, Independence Center, Hawthorne Place Apartments, which aren't going anywhere through partnerships, but we do have a need to be able to consolidate those resources. The reason is dire because we have created managerial and supervisory oversight that is so decentralized that you actually have command structures that are in one operation and one facility that are not co-located with the units that are, that they are supervising or managing. One specific here example is our street crimes unit has found a significant niche with our tactical operations or our SWAT team. They go out and they're the enforcement arm or the overt arm of some of the violent offenders that the street crimes unit takes down. The SWAT unit is housed at the special operations building there in the lower right, while our street crimes unit is kind of carved into space that became available when tech services vacated the third floor of the police building. And there is no room to co-locate either one of those currently successfully. Parking is a problem. As you can see in this top middle, this is a normal routine day. We have cars on every single curb line. We have them double and triple stacked over here. Often, personnel come to work and are forced to park offsite, which creates significant frustration and morale issues when you see the ambush-style attacks that are increasing across our country. We've found numerous individuals walking aimlessly throughout our parking lot, both day and night, which can be a little unnerving, as you'd imagine, and we've had damage to personal vehicles of personnel, both day and night, in our facility as well. So, we talk about those issues, also from an operational inefficiency. We have our crime scene unit, those that go out and process those scenes, those incredible folks. They are housed within our police headquarters right here across the street, and in order to process a vehicle from a search warrant, they have to drive out to the K-9 facility located here in the center, out at Truman and Vista, in order to process those vehicles. If we have more than one vehicle, more than a couple vehicles, we have to put them on rollers and get our people to actually dolly them around and play Tetris with vehicles to be able to process them efficiently within our city. You can see, the need is great. We have reimagined and repurposed every ounce of usable space in that facility. On the left-hand side, you'll see repurposed auto vehicle parts. We have to store those because when we surplus a vehicle after its useful life, we have to return it to the condition that it was in with the original manufacturer's equipment, seats, the whole nine yards, and we take out the police-specific equipment so that we can repurpose that if we all, if we at all possible, or can if it is all possible. Our fleet technician, John Largen, is a phenomenal magician with budgetary dollars as well as repurposing equipment, and he stretches those dollars thin, but as you can imagine, the space is at a premium there. Again, some of those space needs through the middle there. I want to draw your attention specifically to the right side of your screen, which will lead us as a segue into the next focus for our facility, which is the property and evidence room. That is the current state of our property and evidence room. I'm going to give you a little bit closer look as we get down the, into the next section here. But as I mentioned at the outset, between the detention unit and the property and evidence room, those are the two highest liabilities of any police department for good reason. We have care and custody of detainees, we're responsible for their care and custody while they are in our custody. And then property and evidence, we store people's property, whether it be found, whether it be seized, whether it be recovered, as well as evidence that we are required to keep indefinitely in many cases, homicides, sex offenses, other things, that we are required to keep for prosecution and through appeals indefinitely. So the integrity and the, and the safekeeping of that evidence and property to the tune of very, very valuable amounts of money is why those two areas continue to be high liability areas. So, again, the water damage continues. As we talk about missing ceiling tiles here, if you look, this is that exact same property room I just showed you a picture of. This is the center with the missing ceiling tiles. I can give you an update, as of 10 o'clock this morning, when my office was darkened by the captain that is over this section, asked if I heard about the property room, to which I said, "Of course not. What's going on down there now?" He says, "Well, the ceiling continues to leak today on a sunny day in the middle of January or beginning of January, still having water seeping through these ceilings." They have now gone and removed all of the evidence that is here. These are all evidence files that had to be located elsewhere within the facility, this secured portion, because of the potential liability there to the degradation of that evidence, which now, they had to buy additional plastic sheeting and tarping to be able to keep those facilities. As you can see here, this is that middle section, right here is the hole that we're looking at here. There's the ventilation area. They have plastic sheeting up around here and the light fixture that is now down and open from where that water damage is. The update from this morning, however, is they have jigsawed their way finally into a place of no return. There is some of this evidence that is over here that is no longer able to be accessed because if you were, these are rolling medical filing cabinets, if you were to roll them back, you're rolling them into the path of the water that is there, and we just can't do that. So, that's the property and evidence room. The detention unit continues to have the same problems. You'll notice this is the Sally Port here, which is filled with things, property, the amount of property that we get off of prisoners, homeless individuals that we have that have property there, other things, is not going down by any means, it is only going up. So the space limitations from 1973's imagination continue to be problematic. In addition to that, this is the Sally Port wall. You can see the water staining there that continues to go over the electrical conduit and outlets there, creating a fire hazard within the detention unit that only has one way in and one way out. This picture up here depicts the maintenance corridor that is, shows the water damage that is there, as well as the wall that is separating from the foundation over here that is going on inside the detention unit in that maintenance corridor behind the walls. So no doubt, probably also occurring elsewhere. So finally, the last section will be training considerations. Right now, the firing range that we have, let me back up. We've talked about before, both the Supreme Court as well as best industry practices and standards require reality-based scenario training for our law enforcement officers, both at paramount to, as we deal with de-escalation techniques, use of force, lethal force, and all of their skillsets that we put on. We have to, we have to make them reality-based, and they need to be realistic. So, in doing that, we need space in order to be able to accomplish those training skills exercises as well as host those training classes and discussions. Currently, our indoor firing range in the building is five shooting lanes. It's the old FBI style. Many of you were here to see or came on shortly after we opened that up. All we did was remove the lanes, the old cable system, and added a nice new target system, but it is still five lanes wide. We cannot put a vehicle inside of there to deal with armed vehicle encounters, which we have seen problematically on the rise. We can't go in and set it up for different scenarios in lethal force that would incur or would happen inside of a building, like an active shooter situation within a school, to have a classroom area that you would go in and engage a suspect, and all of those other areas that you would think within a residence or a structure that we would go in. When you compare things to like Kansas City or Lee Summit, who have more of like a 25-lane building that is open there that you can wheel cars in, do those kinds of scenarios, set up plywood barriers and set up rooms in different scenarios, it makes for a more robust, more realistic training environment that produces a better officer that is capable of responding when needed. The firearm simulator that we spoke about, that the Public Safety Sales Tax has approved the, for us to look at acquiring, needs a dedicated, no matter if it is the Virtra, which is the industry standard for the current technology, or the virtual reality piece that is the future of technology. Both need a 30-by-30-foot room. We do not have that currently. As Mr. Walker stated, the footprint of that facility is limited by just that. Nolan and Truman, the only place we can go is up, and even then, we're limited by the foundation and the actual structural integrity of what is there existing. So, I say that, that training is complicated. Training is cumbersome for us currently, not to mention the different satellite locations that we have and getting all of our department personnel trained and trained adequately and competently and efficiently. We rely on... We rely on space to be able to conduct these exercises, and and more and more, we rely on our outside partners and other entities, to include the school district, where we've utilized the third floor of their parking garage to do slow-speed vehicle course. When that's iced over, you know, we've had training days on the books for for months on end to try and bring personnel together, adjust schedules, things like that. Weather is not a factor, we go try and train. When it is, we've now upended all these people's schedules at a significant personnel cost, obviously the cost of getting equipment there, cones, you know, depending on what it is. So we talk about things like building searches, slow-speed driving training, which is the one I was mentioning on the third floor of the the independent school district, or in parking lots that we have to go set up that cone course. We've done it at the event center before. Stopstick deployment, again, just as simple as going out and throwing stopsticks, which could be done at a shift level if you had the capacity and and the capability to be able to do that, to run shift-level personnel through. We don't have the the availability to be able to get up and and do that as in real time. You think about I-70 or those areas where if you had that kind of facility that you had a closed environment and you could train. Vehicle stop procedures. Again, we're, we do the best, and our our personnel are phenomenal at what they do. We do the best with what we can. But a lot of times, if we need that skill set or supervisors identify a deficiency somewhere, we are bound by setting up two police cars in the parking lot that you saw was completely full and trying to do that between cars, which just frankly is not realistic. That's just not the the scenario that you have. So again, travel and coordination limits our ability of the operational personnel to conduct training on a on a shift level, which would be while they're working, which then creates us to do department-wide implementation and coordination of training, which takes substantially more personnel, coordination, trade-out of time, taking officers off the street, and and forcing backfill and things like that. So again, the the footprint is of the of a new facility is there and and needed, desperately needed. And this would would also provide our ability to continue to engage our community, both through the Neighborhood Watch programs and different community groups that we continue to engage with and meet with by providing community rooms. You've seen that in other police departments, that they bring in the community and host those functions. An auditorium setup would allow us to be able to host not only city events, but also the the various recognitions that many of you have been to, both commissionings, promotions, awards recognitions, as well as memorial services that we host each and every year frequently. It also would give it a place for for us to be able to host nationally-recognized training to come in, as you may or may not be aware. But those space limitations really significantly limit the quality and caliber of talent that we're able to get on a national level for for trainers to come in from national providers because they need those needs. So we're often paying per diem and travel and expenses to send our personnel in limited quantities there when then when if we had the facility to be able to host that ourselves, we could then offer that out and and sell those to somewhat defray that cost to our outside partners, but he but send the bulk of our personnel to. So again, not to be doom and gloom, but it is somewhat dire. The our our personnel deserve this. They deserve an environment that they can come to work in and be safe, be secure, not worry about water collecting on the floor and that they have to worry about slips and falls. Our public deserve an inviting environment that is functional, that they can come into and and be taken care of as they should. And and again, our our future personnel that we are trying to attract and recruit are looking to this. And with that, I will, I'll take any questions you have.
So we'll just wrap up very quickly. As Chief mentioned, he's more than happy to answer. You know, we really tried to limit this, but I hope you'll understand that we kind of scratched the surface on the challenges and the issues that are going on within that facility and building. What we hope for this evening is to get direction from the council about what you would like to see the January 17th ordinance potentially be used toward, assuming the council would like to call for that election this April. That would be step one, determining that. But secondarily, determining what that use is for. Obviously, the needs in our city are many, but we've tried to highlight one of those more pressing ones for you tonight. And again, plan to, if you were supportive of that, to use this towards a core funding for that public safety campus. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on the tax itself, and the chief can get into the facility.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have a number of questions. I have come and toured your facility. The issues you're talking about are significant, both for the safety of the people who live in Independence and for your team, for them to be able to train well and and do a good job. The marijuana sales tax is going to generate a small amount of money. The amount of money we're talking about to be able to do a center that will safely house people in our custody as well as your team and for their training needs, I think we need to pursue a bond authority to be able to do that because in order to save up from, assume things are great and marijuana is big business in Independence, you're talking 12 years before you can accumulate enough money to break ground. By then, the costs are astronomical. You have lost teammates. While I understand source of new money makes people think that this is possible, I think we need to talk about this important opportunity, but with a different funding stream because this one won't do it. Do you have any estimates on what a facility would cost now? Because looking at the chart you had, those were all 10-years-ago numbers.
So back in 2018, when we had the study commissioned by Hafer Wysocki, they were estimating that a building that would meet our needs for the next 100 years, which is good business to to build out for that 100-year period, we would need about 135,000-square-foot facility. At that time, the study estimated, and this was assuming that we would co-locate municipal court there as well as all these other, and again, we didn't even get into that issue, bringing people across the street from the detention unit through the parking lot into this public building, the safety issues there. This would co-locate everything. That was estimated to be round numbers, about $35 million. If you'll look on the third line of this chart, and again, if this will be online for anybody that wants to go and look at it, I'd call your attention to the the Grain Valley number. Grain Valley approved a general obligation bond in April, so about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, for a $14-million facility to be 22,000 square feet. That's what was estimated for their community's need. Can do the math for you here because I've done it. That calculates out to $636 a square foot, which in today's dollars is about $89 million. So that cost in five years has gone from $35 million to $89 million, highlighting again, there is a cost of doing nothing. It's almost tripled in five years' time.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have the questions? I agree with you, councilmember. I think we need to look at, obviously, the income will come in, and I I believe it's the will of this council to make sure it goes towards the police department and public safety. I mean, I think that's the will of this body as the start. But for a general obligation bond, if we're spending $2 million a year, you said 1.8 just on repairs of the building. If you were in a new building, you could take that $2 million you wouldn't be repairing on that building to use it as a general obligation bond. So there's a start of, because you'd have 30 years, and that's roughly 60 million. Obviously, you're going to have interest rates on that and, you know, the bonding issue if you're if you need $90 million. So I would estimate that we'd probably need another, just off the top of my head, another $2 million, maybe $4 million a year to, you know, pay for a general obligation bond to to get that authority to do it. If I'm doing the numbers off of my top of my head, would you agree with that or or am I whistling Dixie here?
Well, again, in the in the study from 18, I I agree with you, and let me tell you why. The annual debt service for that was estimated at about $2.3 million, and that was on, again, a $35 million facility. You know, if you if you used $89 million and you just simply divided that over a 25-year bond, you're looking at 3 to 3.5 million a year. That's why I I did keep using that term intentionally, core funding toward it, because this will not wholly satisfy construction costs alone. There are going to have to be additional, if if this is the outcome, there are going to have to be additional resources brought to bear to support delivering this.
Okay, thank you. And I'd probably talk with you offline to say, okay, what are some realistic numbers there and things like that? And we go to get this on the agenda for Monday. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I don't know. The numbers just aren't doing it for me. So 9, 89 million to build a new building. I know you said part of that money would go for it. So it's one if we change the language and then we just decide, oh, we can't really do the new building. What happens then? I mean, then the money goes.
I mean, you're, you're, whatever your ordinance calls for is obviously what we're restricted to using those dollars for. So if if you use these funds to specifically say facilities, then we're going to have to somehow deliver on facilities with that money. Just the same as if we said we were using money for like our street sales tax and our park sales tax, whatever that use is that we request voter support for, obviously, I'm telling you what you know, we we have to use it for that specific use. That's why the language is is very important, that we were careful what we ask for.
Right. I just have a concern that if we put that language in there and then we we can't afford, you know, the debt obligations, we don't, I don't know, then what do we do with the money? So I have huge concern with it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just want to echo your comments and Councilmember McCandless's comments about the the building and the concern about how much the the marijuana tax would apply towards that. I mean, there's a big gap there in my mind. And but I am certainly in favor of crafting language that would allow us some flexibility to, but with a priority to use it for a public safety center. I'm not, you know, I haven't seen any language yet, but I I think that certainly would be important to me. The other piece of that is that, you know, assuming that we did use it to build a building, at some point, we'll have that building paid off before your 100 years is up. And and so I would like to to think about some language that would allow us to utilize those funds for reasonable purposes connected to to public safety as well.
Madam, please proceed.
I have a a couple of questions. How many marijuana dispensaries do we currently have licensed in Independence?
We have four.
Okay. And are we capped in the number?
Only by the state. That's what's been authorized by the state, but our code does not cap those.
Okay. I've looked at some of the numbers in towns in Colorado that had instituted sales tax, and they had a high run-up when it was new and fashionable, and then it kind of leveled off. So, you know, over time, this will generate less money. To me, the the two things people talk to me, you know, I knocked a bunch of doors, and the two things people brought up were police safety issues and trash and what the condition of neighborhoods were. It it seems to me that recommending this money for neighborhood cleanup, roadside trash pickup, demolition of dangerous buildings, burnt-out houses, et cetera, does an awful lot for the look and feel of a community. And safety isn't just police, it is also how people perceive their communities. And then have us have a serious conversation with our community about the needs for a justice center. What are the real costs of that? How do we bond that? How do we think about that over 25 years? Because I'm with Councilmember Fears. If this takes us forever to save the money and that continues to escalate, or we never, as Councilmember Stewart said, accumulate enough money to do this, the money is sunk because we've made a promise. So using it to fulfill promises and expectations of the community perhaps in a different way, but a more robust approach to how we address the justice center would be my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm going to kind of follow in line with with some of this discussion here. First of all, I do not want to lose sight of the great need this this police building, this dire need of. It drives me nuts or drove me nuts last summer, seeing the cranes over there lifting up the air conditioning units and working on that over there. Our men and women deserve better than that. Our citizens deserve better than that. The future growth of our city deserves better than that. Now, with that said, looking at the numbers and doing the math and having those discussions with some of my colleagues with sidebar conversations and with the city manager, the the numbers aren't aren't jiving for a significant debt service to be able to pay for such a a large building. Hopefully, when the decision is made, and I'm with the fact that we need to take a very robust look at how we do this in a more holistic, absolute way as opposed to a piecemeal Blight, dangerous buildings, as Councilwoman McCandless has been talking about, is very much a a strong need on on the west side of town, not that it's not over the entire city. When first coming on, the council in 2016, our annual budget for dangerous building demo was about $100,000. The lead time to to take a building down was was very long. We have shortened that down tremendously. Our budget has increased. But even as we go through our fiscal year, we're getting close to halfway through it, we're getting close to having those those budgeted monies depleted. The need is great. In fact, I was talking to our community development person, Holly, who they're getting ready to go out and and do some massive car towing Thursday. There's going to be a massive cleanup next week as well. These are significant costs that the citizens have, and it is a quality-of-life issue when we have this type of of problem. I would be more inclined to move into the neighborhood services, given the the dollar amounts that we're talking about here. This is a a lesser amount compared to an IPD building, but is a significant amount when it comes to impacting our neighborhoods in blight removal, quality of life. And those are the things that I also hear on a on a regular basis is is the trash. As as we are all painfully aware, we've we've had the trash conversation, which was a great conversation. We talked about it. We got the feedback. We made the decision to move on with with that conversation, so we're listening. But on the opposite side of of that conversation of of listening to is listening to our constituents about the trash that's being thrown down and how to do that. I would be inclined to to really work with with the neighborhood services and and putting that component together and and really attacking that core problem and and have a significant continual funding source to make some significant improvements.
If I could just echo, in when we took a look at the ordinance for a neighborhood services issue, one of the statistics that, I mean, I think we can all visualize the problem, but sometimes numbers help put a issue into perspective as well. So this year, our code enforcement staff ordered 987 abatements. So that's not, you know, coming by and inspecting. That's somebody didn't mow their yard after repeated investigations, didn't pick up the trash, didn't pick up the illegal dumping. 987 abatements calculates to 51 abatements per acre in this community. So picture each acre in the city, you're going to come across 51 different instances of tall grass and weeds or trash or illegal dumping.
If I may, Mayor. Also, to continue with that, with with removal of some of these dangerous buildings, there's quite a list of them.
223.
And unfortunately, because of our code enforcement and our compliance and the community development, some of those take those buildings down themselves, but a large number of them do not. But what that does is reduce, hopefully reduce- but a large number of them do not. But what that does is reduce, hopefully reduces the calls for service for our fire, uh, men and women, so they don't have to go out there and deal with that. Uh, calls for service to our, our police officers, um, because you have squatters in vacant buildings. And so hopefully tackling one helps with the others. So i- it's almost still working with our public safety individuals with, with that.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Listen, I'm, I'm all for the idea that we need a new police station. I mean, it's, it's not in the best condition, and I agree. I mean, we, we're talking about significant money for first responders to be cared for and, and, and to make sure that they're, uh, properly housed, um, training facilities, um, expansion of, of safety is huge. When I look at the numbers, I didn't realize it was going to come in that low. I mean, we're going to have to sell some really good pot, I guess, to get the, the revenue up. But, but when you look at those numbers, I'm just going to throw a wrench into it. I wonder how come we're not discussing it all. Something that, uh, I had a conversation with another councilman on is the idea that maybe we should, uh, look at using that money for substance abuse and mental health programs. That's a public safety issue, too. And, and those, with that, with the revenue that's coming in, that could really make a significant step towards servicing that community better. And, um, I, I just throw it out there for consideration. And, but, in the meantime, we have to look at, how do we, I, I'm, you know, gosh, is there ever a good time to go in debt? No. But we've got so much, um, that we need to look at and decide, uh, how we want to care for our community, how we want our men and, and women, actually, our women and our men to, to be cared for and, uh, trained and housed to do their job and be proud of where they, they work. And some live away from home. So, um, I think those are serious conversations that we really, really need to have. But looking at just that revenue, I, I thought, um, I thought it would be more, but that seems like it would be a good number to have for those substance abuse and mental health challenges that we have in our community. So, just food for thought. That's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Mr. City Manager, if I can ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
What's the deadline that we need to have the language ready to go for the ballot issue so that we can put it on the ballot in April?
We have to provide notification to the Board of Elections by January 24th.
So really, the January 17th meeting is...
Unless you were to call a special meeting for the 23rd, um, which, you know, then the, the clerk would, the very next day have to provide that ordinance to the...
Right. Um, I'll, I'll float an idea to the group here. I think it's important that we sit down and we collectively agree that we're going to talk about the appropriate language. Keeping a promise to citizens is incredibly important for all of us, and we've got to make sure that we make that decision. I hear a collective, uh, how shall I say this, diverse group of ideas on how this ballot language should be written. And I think we need to get together to, to do that. So I would not want to have a meeting on the 23rd. I would want to have a meeting maybe this Thursday and actually sit down as a group and say, what are we going to do? And, and, and make proposals to, how are we going to put the language together? Because if we don't do that and we are not prepared for it, I think it's unfair to give the city manager this diverse of ideas and say, please write ballot language, and then, you know, one or two of us are not happy, then we vote against it, uh, the evening of the, saying that those, my items, ideas were not in there. So we've collectively got to make a decision as a group, and I wanted to ask you, I realize we can't make a vote here, but, um, you know, but you could also show a, a concern of dissent of saying, I don't want to meet on Thursday evening, but, um, uh, what's anyone's thoughts on that? Please proceed.
I'll be more than happy to meet Thursday. Um, so I'll throw this out for a discussion point. I don't think it's, it's 100% imperative that we, we run this, um, in conjunction with other municipalities. I think this could possibly be, would August be the next, next date?
That's correct.
That would give us time to, to wordsmith it, to, to get our, our thoughts and our ideas on what we want to do, uh, together. It's just a thought, but I'd be more than happy to, to be here Thursday to work on it as well.
Let's do this. I know there's all the municipalities on this side of the area. I would like to personally go with those other communities, because we're all going to be talking about it. It's going to be all the media attention. Uh, if you do it by yourself in August in a, in a small election, you're just not going to get the, the media attention for it. So I think that's important. Um, if I could, you know, with the permission of the council, task the city manager to collect all the languages, because I know Blue Springs has their language written, if I'm correct.
They, they do.
And there's other cities that have at least proposed language written. And so I know Blue Springs decided to go in a very general perspective, because I talked to Mayor Carson Ross about that. Um, and I think we need to, we need to, you know, if we're going to make a promise, we'd be able to keep it. And if the projections are not as high as they would like to be for a police station, but the other side of the coin is, this, this body has got to be tasked with, how do we realistically look at our budget and build a police station? Uh, because I, I am just not in favor of kicking that can down the road. And, and so, will that require some difficult choices? It may in fact require some difficult choices. But I think those are the things in front of us, and, uh, that'd be my proposal. If nobody, uh, objects, uh, then I say, let's call a special meeting on Thursday, get the information together, and then see what people think, because I think it's imperative that we move on this. But, uh, I also see Councilmember Hobart has, uh, appeared on the screen. I know you were there on the, uh, the process. So Councilmember Hobart, do you, would you like to, uh, time in, chime in and give us your thoughts? We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Is my mic not working?
There, you're working now.
Sorry.
No worries.
I, I agree generally. Uh, we've got less revenue projected than expected with the marijuana tax. But we've got a, a significant and long-lasting need for police facility. Uh, I agree, we need to, to get to as much of a consensus as we can between us. I agree with the Thursday meeting, and uh, I definitely agree with, uh, keeping this item on the April ballot. Uh, if, if for some reason, uh, you know, we, we do not, uh, dedicate this tax to, uh, public safety in some way, you know, that would give us the opportunity to consider a bond on the August ballot for a police facility. So I don't, I don't know the advantages to that or not, but, um, I, I, like you just said, am not prepared to put that off for much longer. It is a, it, we are beyond a dire circumstance. You know, Mr. Walker didn't put up the Kansas side departments, uh, but we're not just competing with folks on this side. Lee Wood, Shawnee, Lenexa, Overland Park is doing a renovation on theirs. Uh, many, many, many of the departments in this entire metro are, uh, building new, if not upgrading, facilities that are, that were already newer than ours to begin with. Lee Wood's on their second police station that's newer than ours. So I'm in for Thursday. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Did you have a timeframe on Thursday you were anticipating?
I'm open for discussion on that, because I'm actually doing the same thing, looking at my calendar and seeing what's...
I know I have a conflict at 6:00 PM. I'm hopeful that I could get, I have to make a report at that, at the beginning of that meeting. I could get out of there fairly soon, but, but I would need to join you late if you start at 6:00.
If we started at 7:00, do you think we could make that?
Yes, I could do that. No, no problem.
Anyone else? Any conflicts or concerns? A 7 o'clock start would actually make it easier for me, too. So you're good with that? Councilmember, good? Councilmembers, you good? Okay. So let's, uh, Madam City Clerk, if we can notice that up for a special meeting just to discuss the language for the ballot, you'll get some examples of that. Um, and then if you can come with a couple of recommendations, if we go with... What, there was a, a variety of options here.
We'll have both. We'll have kind of examples of what...
I would say three or four options, and then see if we can coalesce around one idea.
I, I will say generally, for the council's benefit tonight, the Missouri Municipal League provided draft ballot language that most municipalities are utilizing. So I will get that to you in advance, and I'll get it to the clerks so the community can see that. Really what's deviating are any of the municipalities that are deciding to allocate it for a specific purpose. So then, changing the language from theirs.
Okay. Perfect. But I, you know, I just think it's very, very important that, uh, if we're going to make a promise, make sure that we can keep that promise. But it's also very imperative that we need to work really hard on how do we get a police facility that's, you know, the state of the art and not a situation that, uh, our, our officers are and our civilian staff are put at risk by being in a building that's got, we don't even know what it is yet. Uh, and I'm afraid to get the report, to be honest with you, and I'm sure you are, too. Uh, so with that, yes, Councilmember, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as we work through this situation, we get this box checked, I would, uh, strongly recommend that we just quickly pivot as a council and we move in that direction and keep this on the front burner. Uh, Mr. City Manager, can you, can you give us dates of, target dates that we need to make decisions by for, to be placed on ballots moving through the calendar year?
For, uh, for a police issue?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I mean, I, I would agree that the most logical funding source, um, that remains, uh, in front of us for this issue is a general obligation bond, that most of those agencies that I put up, that is how that was funded. I will say that those involved, um, significant community outreach and involvement, um, because that is, uh, involving, um, a self-imposed property tax on oneself and/or one's business. Um, so making sure people understand what that means, um, but then also directly for them, you know, how much is that going to cost? Um, I think that's critical to help folks understand that. Um, state statute governs when you call for a general obligation bond, so I will get the council a calendar of, um, available dates of when, and within the next maybe 12-month window, so you can see, um, when those are allowed for under state statute.
So with that being said, uh, Madam City Clerk, if we can call for a meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday night to discuss the ballot language, and so get that written with the anticipation of being on the April ballot, uh, for the marijuana tax. And then obviously, at another study session, uh, we'll talk about a general obligation bond, uh, to fund a police department, because that is so incredibly important. And to get a police building, uh, put into place, uh, you know, I don't know what to say. My emotions are out for you and, and for all of your officers and all of your personnel that have to work in that building. And, uh, we'll see what we can do as a body to make sure that we can address that issue. Uh, it's long overdue, and, uh, we'll have to put our pencils together and say, how do we make this work? Um, with that being said, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just one question. Is there any of the pandemic money left, any COVID money that could be reallocated towards something or towards some of the costs of this?
So let me do a reassessment with staff. We're due to do that anyway. Um, let me use just loose examples. Let's say you allocated funding toward, uh, an equipment purchase in the police department, and if you allocated, by no means are these real numbers, okay?
Or sidewalks.
Yeah, or, a million dollars, and we spent $800,000 on that, there might be $200,000. I don't know, but let me sort of do a recalculating.
Can you bring that Thursday if you can?
And I will, I will bring that. I think we can do that Thursday. They don't know that, but we can do that Thursday.
I like the way you said it. Thank you.
Um, and, and, um, what I would tell you, probably the best immediate use, if we do have funds available for that, would be to start working with some kind of firm to put together updated numbers and studies, so we're not just trying to expand off of five-year-old figures.
Okay. Anyone else? So we'll, uh, be adjourned until we get together Thursday evening at 7:00 PM here. Let me ask this question. Can we use this room, or do we need to use another room? Is there any conflict for us to use this room on Thursday? Does anyone know? Madam City Clerk is checking. Youth Court is here. Um... I'm sorry?
The only other option for us then would be to go to the utility centers where we have the broadcast capabilities.
Okay. Would that work, or is that open? Do you know? Okay. Uh, if you can, let's check that ASAP and, and see if we do that, or see if we can actually get, uh, an opportunity to do that.
Very good.
And I've missed one agenda item, haven't I?
Your meeting.
Well, no, no, no. There are people telling me to move on. Uh, Mr. City Manager, what's your recommendation?
Uh, given the hour and, and the weight of what we discussed tonight, um, I would recommend postponing this to the next meeting. Uh, for those that were listening, uh, let me back up. Councilmember Stewart, would that be okay with you? Because I know we discussed this item. Okay, that, that was...
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay.
So Councilmember Stewart, is, is an agreement to move that item to another study session, and we can reach out to you and make sure that you get it on the study session you like, and we'll put it to the front of it so that item gets covered. Uh, I agree with you. I'd love to see the, uh, impact of Senate Bill 5 on our revenues and also just, you know, warrants and things like that in the city. And I know, uh, Chief, you can talk about that extensively, too, and that impact. So with that being said, and with your recommendation, hold on one second. Oh, yep, and we have one board report. Please forgive me.
I'll be first.
No worries.
Uh, Tourism Commission, we have a resolution on the next agenda to appoint Glenn Esplin. If there's no objections, then we'll move forward with having that on the agenda for 117.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
University of Missouri Extension Council, appointing Doug Short. No objections. That's also on the agenda for 117. Public Safety Sales Tax, um, Patrick Casey and Bruce Ludeman. If there's no objections, there's a resolution on the 117 agenda for appointment. Street Improvement Oversight Committee, Labeto Jada, there's a resolution on the 117 agenda. If there's no objections, we'll keep that on there. And then finally, it's not on my board report, but, um, PUAB, Councilmember McCandless, would like to appoint, uh, Steve McLucky. If there's no objections, that is also on the agenda for 117.
Okay.
And then finally, I'll defer to Zach. Did you want to talk about those two commissions, or do you want to kick that to February?
Let's also kick that to February, please.
Perfect. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Uh, Mr. City Manager, anything else from your perspective?
Nothing tonight, sir.
All right. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.